And he's my right hand man with the Arbor League and has been 29 years. We used to see these pictures of Indiana and Ohio and Michigan, these streets that were tree-lined streets, and a year later they were barren and gone. And that's what we're facing now in Polk City, losing a lot of ash trees. We're still treating some, but we're losing a lot. The state goal is to increase the tree canopy by 3% by 2050. And that represents over 3 million trees, which is roughly one per resident. So I would encourage you all to do your part, plant trees. This is the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day, which is this coming Friday. Arbor Day is probably last Friday in April. It's the 29th, 150th anniversary. We will be planting a tree at the school on Friday, weather permitting. If not, it'll be followed by Tuesday. There are approximately 940 communities in Iowa. Of those 940 communities, Polk City is one of 74 to be Tree City USA. So it is a rather prestigious award. Of the 74 Tree City USAs, 16 communities got the Growth Award, including Polk City. Polk City has gotten the Growth Award, 27 of our 29 years, which is a pretty spectacular record in itself. The Polk City Arbor League continues to do the maintenance on all of the trees that we've planted over the years, which includes the sports complex, Gwannas Park, Leonard Park, Linear Park, East Broadway at Deer Haven, Retention Basin, the elementary school, the Rock Park, which has my name on it, and other trees we've planted around town. But those are the main areas right there. Let's see here. Administrative details on Tree City USA were turned over to Jason Tran the year before this, and I assisted Jason through that again this year. But Jason's pretty well taken care of the administrative end of it. The Arbor League handles all of the project work. I would again like to thank Public Works for being a continued support. Without the support that we have, Public Works, that we didn't have when we got into this program 30 years ago, disrespect, but due to the amount of help we get from Public Works, it really helps what we can do and what we can plant. Biggest thing with our group is we're on a limited number of volunteers. And when we plant trees, the first three years is critical that they don't dry out. And after that, we take care of the maintenance. But the first three years is something that's extremely time-consuming. And Public Works is better equipped to do it than we were with five-gallon buckets and that's five-gallon ground. So we appreciate their support. Next year will be 30 years of Tree City USA, and that very likely will be my final presentation to the city council. And at that point, I'm going to just turn it on over to Jason and Parks Commission, or Public, excuse me, Jason Tran will be in there. At the awards luncheon, we were given the Growth Award, little sheet of paper. We got a pen that went with it, which has already been put up on the plaque. There was a pin that goes up on this set of plaques back here. Jason took care of that for us as well. I've got all of the Tree City stickers that Bill and I are going to take care of getting put up. We also do the budget cutbacks. As compared to every other year in the past, we've always gotten a new flag. And now they're doing it every other year. I've put in our request to get a new flag. And if we get denied, we're going to just buy it. Because these flags out here don't last more than about a year pretty anyway. And so we'll buy a new flag if need be. They used to give us. I did bring one of the old flags in case if you want to get a picture of the presentation. I did bring a Tree City flag. You want a picture with the city council? Other than, Jason Tran says yes. Other than that, that's the extent of my presentation. And we're moving forward. And we've also, we did get our Mid-American Energy grant money. And that, again, I'll emphasize that Mid-American grant money, when this program first started 30 years ago, part of what started it, part of it was that I'd seen an article in the paper about Mid-American giving funding. We've gotten Mid-American funding for 30 years straight. And were it not for that money, we wouldn't be in business, and all these trees wouldn't be here. And if you know any of the executives of Mid-American Energy, thank them for that. I mean, we get a small amount, obviously we get a small amount. That's what's kept us in business. All of the trees at the sports complex, Gwannas Park, all these other parks with names have basically happened on that money. And we've done a little bit of fundraising on the side as well. We had a couple of nice donations this year. But it's the Mid-American money that has funded all of these trees in Polk City. The Arbor League does the work. They pay for it. There's a lot of trees in this community that have cost this city zero.
Well, funding is one thing. But if anything should be noted, and I appreciate the one-year notice for you, and I guess that's included, that Phil's included in that. But again, funding notwithstanding, these two guys have done more for longer than about anybody anywhere has when it comes to planting trees. So that to me is much more meaningful, the donation, I know it comes from different sources, but very, very much appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you, Rob. And I'll just say, we do it for the kids. We do it for the community. My line is, we plant for the children that will never be. By the time these trees get big enough to be shade, you know, we're not going to be. Some of them have developed as shade over these 30 years. But, you know, I tell the kids we're planting for them, they're kids. That's our focus. And it's got to be a tree hugger at heart. And Phil is, and that's a labor of love.
Well, and it is affirming to me, too, that Jason's taken over and that the Arbor League has grown to lessen the burden for you guys, because it shouldn't be that way. And, you know, just to use a plug here, you know, we've been, Teresa's set up a Facebook page, and there are different ways to connect. But for anybody that may be watching that wants to get involved, there's plenty of opportunities to.
There's always opportunities for membership in the Arbor League, and the dues are zero.
Able to.
We appreciate your support. Thanks.
And I'll just echo that again. I like to not hear what you said about this maybe being here last year, because you guys have made such a difference over the years. I know, I'm like, I, but I also know that Jason's appreciative, too, of you guys helping transfer some of the wealth balance that you guys have. I mean, it's your experience, all the work you've done has been so valuable to this community. So whether it's next year or whenever, appreciate you helping set us up to be successful moving forward.
And just to clarify on that, I'm not, I'm not resigning. I, Jason has taken over all the administrative end of it. I'm a tree dog, and I like to plant trees and plant trees. And we're going to continue to do that when it comes to the administrative end of it, including this presentation. I'll do it next year for the 30th year, but then it's probably going to go his way.
Well, that's, that's good news. That's good news. And you say you're making a difference, though, for the future children. But going and doing the presentations to the school, that makes a difference to all of those kids right now. I think they do look forward to it. And I think I mentioned before, I have a kid that loves trees, and that matters. And whether it's your messaging or other messaging he's heard, but he thinks, because we back out to a bunch of trees, he can probably breathe better at our house than a lot of people can out there because of all the trees. So that messaging and the importance of trees, I know people like to be up there, but the value of trees is huge. And thank you for being that message.
Thank you, guys. Every year, bless. I think you said this is your final year more than once. So retirement out.
This retirement deal just doesn't.
I know, I know. So don't hold your breath, that's all. Thank you very much for all the work. Thank you so much. Phil's saying.
We'll go get your photo.
What do you want to do?
You can stand behind them, in front of them, wherever you want.
Okay. I wore my tree hat.
The only time this gets worn is for Arbor Day and planting it.
But you will have to scoot it in.
Are we going to stay?
I don't have a wedding.
Who do we look at?
Jason first.
Leave right here.
We can't. Hold on a second. Let me move to the side here, and then you can lift that up higher so that you can see.
You want to stand in front of him?
No, no, no. I'll stand over at the side. I don't. It's a city war. There you go.
Want to.
Jason, you're supposed to be.
It's all about you, Ken.
Do the picture next year. Got it. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. I'll see you next year.
Sounds good. We'll count on it.
Okay, we will move on to item number five, public hearings. We'll begin with A, public hearing for the sale of real property located at 717 Waldo Street. And it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on that proposed sale at 717 Waldo Street. And when was the, when was it published? Oh, do we need a motion, don't we? No? Okay. When was the notice published?
April 15.
And any written comments received for against the proposed sale?
No, sir.
And so at this time, we'll request staff to provide a report.
I'm just going to provide a quick report, but the city council's holding the public hearing to authorize the sale of 717 Waldo Street to ACG Properties in the amount of $112,500. Just a quick reminder, the city of Polk City acquired the property through Iowa's 657A abandoned properties process, and we took bids for the property. So the city received five bids for the purchase of the property, and ACG's proposed purchase price was the highest bid. There is a copy of the purchase agreement available in the packet this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed sale of real property? Hearing done, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
So we'll move on to the resolution, 2022-46, approving sale of real property. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move. Second.
And roll call, please.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll just add a note that I expect the same level of improvement as the last time you did this on those belts.
Moving on, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the proposed development agreement with ACG Properties LLC. When was the notice published?
April 15.
Any written comments received for against?
No, sir.
Staff report, please.
I will handle this one as well. So the council's holding a public hearing regarding a proposed development agreement with ACG Properties for their project Move. This is located at 302 South Third Street. For clarification, this is a different property than 717 Waldo Street. It is just involving the same company. No, I, no, I just want to clarify that. So the city has offered tax increment financing incentives for this commercial business with a do-not-exceed amount of $110,000 over a period of seven years. So the city council previously amended their urban renewal plan for this project, and that step has been taken care of.
Great. Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed development agreement? Hearing done, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
I can.
And roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Approved. Moving on to the resolution, then, 2022-47, approving development agreement
with ACG Properties LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments, and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. I'll ask for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second, and I'll add a comment, just to kind of plain language the, what the actual tip is here, because I think this is appropriately used instance where, stop, where I may state this incorrectly, taxing, collecting the same amount of tax on the property as is, incentivizing refurbishment to make it what they want it to be. So the value proposition, in my opinion, is to take a building that's been vacant now for three years, two, three years, and incentivizing somebody to make it into something where it is. And so on that marginal improvement, not the whole thing. That is a very good and appropriate use, in my opinion, when you use this type of financing.
Jenny, roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Great. Approved. Moving on to item number six, public comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Anyone contact us about?
No, sir.
Anyone in the audience? Great. So we will move on then to item number seven, the consent items. And I'll ask for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Great. Approved. Moving on to item number six, public comments. This is the time and
place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Anyone contact us about?
No, sir.
Anyone in the audience? Great. So we will move on then to item number seven, the consent items. And I'll ask for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Approved. Item number eight, business items. A is FEH Design Services Proposal for City Hall and Fire Station Projects. And who's presenting?
I'm going to, yeah, let Cory and Denny Sharp take it from here.
Sure. Hello, Mayor, Council. My name's Cory Sharp. I'm an architect and principal at FEH Design. Our office is located at 604 East Brandon Avenue, downtown Des Moines. We've been in business as FEH for about 120 years. And our roots go back for 120 years in public work. We've been serving the public sector in many ways, from K21 schools to municipal projects like the ones that you guys have in front of myself. I've done a handful of fire department projects in the past. I look forward to hopefully working with Chief Mitchell here on the work of renovating the existing station. And our firm has done numerous different city hall projects around the state. So happy to answer any questions you might have about myself at the firm. Denny Sharp is also here, past president of FEH. I'm sure he could answer anything that I can. Anything else?
I guess if you could just kind of go in a little bit. So we're engaging you to, we've got budgeted those renovations. Where are they going to be? What are they going to look like? What are the layout? Can you give us and the public a heads up on what that actually means on, you know, will we have public meetings? Will we?
Sure.
Put, I just, I guess I shouldn't ask it like any.[1264.83]
Sure.
Whatever we can, because I think that's a big unknown is, it's not what we're doing, but how we're doing and what's.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things that's really special about the way that our firm operates. So the proposal you guys have in front of me today is really just for the first phase of design for these two projects, or what we call schematic design. And what that will include is us taking a look at the master plan study that you guys had previously completed, verifying that all those things that are part of those materials are correct, going back and doing some sort of re-interviewing of key city staff personnel, fire department personnel, maybe some key public stakeholders, and then holding a public design charrette, which is where we come in, we'll bring a suitcase full of markers and trace paper and design in front of the community what the future plans are for both the fire department and the new city hall. The public will be invited to come in and provide comments on those. They can look over our shoulder and tell us that we're drawing things wrong, and we'll redraw it. Happy to do that sort of thing. And hopefully by the end of not only our expert session, but once we kind of take that and really verify all those parts and pieces, we'll be able to give you an idea of initial costs of what we'll think it'll take and kind of what those buildings are going to look like. That's what this first proposal will provide for you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you be able to direct us to any facilities that you've worked on recently?
Sure. So on the fire department side, we actually recently completed a similar fire department renovation that you guys have in front of you in Pleasant Hill. I think we cut the ribbon on that like two weeks ago, something like that. Fire Chief Jamie Zaiavon out there was really great to work with. We've also completed some fire department work in the city of Ribndale. We worked a little bit with Johnston Grimes. We've worked a little bit with the city of Bondurant. And now on the city hall side, we've worked with the city of Norwalk on their city hall. I think that might have been eight or nine years ago. Aldona recently completed a new city hall in their downtown square. I think that might have been two or three years ago. And then we've got all kinds of other public projects, people that provide referrals for us as well, people like that, any of those.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Question?
No, this is just exciting to be starting to move forward. And again, I appreciate the public input aspect that I need. It's going to be a really big deal for us, so thank you in advance for all the work you're going to do to help us get there.
Well, we understand that, you know, public projects like these are funded by public, so it's part of our DNA to include as many people as possible. We're looking forward to it.
Do you don't make any actual wood structure like they have, you can mockups for us that you make?
Most of that stuff nowadays is kind of digital.
I know.
You're not going to bring Legos.
For the visual, there's certain, you know, that need to touch them and whatnot, but I was just, I think this is great. This is what we needed for our next step to continue down the road of reality, because it's been essentially non-reality for so long. You know, like after me, it'll happen after I get out.
Yeah.
Not around anymore, whatever the case may be. But I do think this is a great next step so we can continue the momentum and not track the work. So thank you. Minus the actual building.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
Chelsea, can I add?
Sure.
These gentlemen have come very well recommended from the fire service. They've done a great job in Ribndale, and I know Pleasant Hill is a great app, but the work they did there, so.
Thank you.
Great. We'll move on to B then.
We need a motion.
So move.
Second.
And roll.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Did you get all that?
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
B is second. Second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen hundred, amending chapter sixty-three, speed regulations. Is there a report on that?
No, I don't think so. It's just the same memo that Mike had written for the first one.
Yep.
Okay. So a motion then? And a roll call?
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes. C, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen hundred, amending the zoning restrictions on a property located at three oh two South Second Street. We don't have a report on that.
I can just give a quick overview. So this is the rezoning for the project, and this is the third final reading of the ordinance.
I think we've not heard anything. I know there was some comments during P and Z. I don't think we had anybody come to our meeting.
I have not received any additional comments.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Devorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Approved. Moving on to number nine on the agenda. We have two proclamations. One is for Municipal Clerk Week, May first through the seventh. Now therefore, I, Steve Carson, Mayor of the City of Polk City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the week of May one through May seven, two thousand twenty-two as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Jenny Coffin, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So, thank you. Thank you.
Is that your radio voice? Go ahead, keep it.
So then we'll move on to the National Police Week, May eleventh through seventeenth proclamation. Now therefore, I, Steve Carson, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the week of May eleventh through seventeen, two thousand twenty-two as National Police Week, Polk City, Iowa, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. I urge all citizens to recognize these officers' faithful and loyal devotion to responsibilities. So thank you.
Thank you, Hermie. Please let your staff know.
Item number ten, reports in particulars. We'll begin with staff.
Sure, I'd like to thank the Polk City Friends of the Parks. They threw a great five K event on Saturday morning. They got a break in the weather, and they took full advantage of it. I'd also like to thank all the sponsors. Too many to list from memory right now, but very supported by the community. And thanks to the PD, Public Works, Fire Department, Library Friends Group that had activities there. Those events aren't easy to put on, and having other departments that help with their areas of expertise is beyond appreciated. The other thing, I know it's been going around a little bit, but the sports complex suffered a little bit of damage in the Saturday night storms that rolled through. We're already getting a lot of it alleviated. Some were just waiting on the proper people to come out, do what they do best. But essentially, the wind picked up some bleachers and threw them into a backstop, so everything's damaged. But we're, we're going to get that cleaned up as fast as we can. That's all.
So then Chelsea, did you have anything?
I, I actually do have two things really briefly. I just wanted to let the council know that the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the proposed future land use plan, and they are recommending a few changes. So they reviewed that at their April meeting. They will be reviewing and discussing again May sixteenth, and they will recommend changes to the council. But I just wanted to let you all know that we are moving that process along. They just had some suggestions for changes. The second thing I wanted to just real briefly state is Jenny Coffin, city clerk, has been awarded two scholarships to attend the National Clerks Academy. So in our field of work, training is crucial, but national conferences are very expensive. We don't always have an opportunity to attend, so I wanted to ensure and just share with the city council that one, she will be attending next month, and two, there will be no cost to the city because of the scholarships she successfully applied for and received. So good job, Jen.
Good, Danny. Where is it?
Little Rock, Arkansas. Not very international, but.
Probably going to be thirty degrees.
True.
So don't, don't forget to put a smiley face in your notes.
Okay, got it.
And then I guess I will ask if the council has anything to share.
I got a couple of things. I wanted to say that I was excited to see the Citizens Academy in the consent agenda coming back this fall. That's, uh, is a really good thing, I think, to kick off last year. Coming back again this year is good. Just to expand a little bit on, Jason, you mentioned the Friends of the Park group, and I love seeing new groups that make it easier for new faces to get involved. And I know that specifically in this case, Lightning the Load with both the Parks Commission, you, your department, which is you, and even the Arbor League, having organizations that, I think, the Shade, whatever they're calling it, at Leonard Park is a, is a perfect use for a, a new like that. So love seeing that. And, yeah, it was, it was a nice day for about four hours on Saturday and really crappy the rest of it. So, but that was somewhat.
Yeah, I'll let go of that. It was a great event, to be able to participate. And, yeah, it was fun to spend some time on the square there and the businesses that were involved. I mean, a lot went into the event, and it was a great event. So thanks to everyone that was involved in that. I do also just want to speak to the CIP again. I know we went through that, but, um, again, can't thank enough for how much work went into it from the get-go. It's fun to go back and see what we have accomplished, but then, again, use it as a tool to fully understand what, what haven't we done that we thought we were going to do and understand why and what the impacts of changing those things are. So I'm glad we went back through it, made some adjustments as necessary. You know, things come up in five years. So that was good to go back through that and get that updated to where we are and our current priorities and focus.
I had, not several, but at least a couple of people approach me about the roadways in and around Polk City and wondering if something could be done about that. And then thinking about it, is there any way we could offer some incentive, incentives for some of the children's groups, scouts, whatever, to clean up those ditches and, and roadways, all the construction debris that's blown in there? It's been a tough winter, and that stuff's blowing around a lot, but it is there. And as many people walk in Polk City, they see it, they bring it up. And I don't know, it'd be nice if we got some donations maybe to, to give kids some incentive to pick it up, the different youth groups in and around town. It'd, it'd help if they'd come from the people that created it, so. Yes, sir.
It's been a windy year.
Yeah, it has. It has. I understand that.
If I may address that, Ron, I've had conversations with Principal Richards at the middle school. We're going to do our eighth grade cleanup day again on May twenty-fourth, and we've identified those entryways in town and those ditches. That's something they're going to start doing as part of that day. I don't know if they'll be able to get it all, but we're going to start.
How's that for a response? Part of those quick responses. Yeah, thank you, Richard. Well, and similar, Jason, we had talked at the last Arbor League, the Arbor League's got some money. Not by coincidence, maybe from a developer in this room, a donation, but anyway, and talked about where to place some of those entryways came up in. One in particular owned by the Army Corps is a focus of mine.
But I told my family, now I actually need to do this. If we could just go and spend fifteen minutes picking up trash. I mean, like I said, it's been a windy year, you know, so, so definitely those groups. But, yeah, to the extent that anyone can just, you know, if you see trash, pick it up and throw it away. We'd go a long way too. Like, but that wind is crazy this year.
I have some, just real quick for the police department. You had like twenty summer arrests last? Seventeen are felons?
Yes.
So I'm going to, I'm going to build up to, we are very fortunate to have, and, and a lot of drug cases too, right? They're going through here, they're going to continue to go through here in the summer, more and more as it gets warmer. So kudos to all your, to all the officers, continue to do the good work. And I don't know everybody else, but I feel very safe here, you know, but we, there's a lot of things going on behind closed doors and that we don't see besides lights once in a while. Eudoris is, you know, doing, doing exactly what I was hoping she would do when we got her four or five years ago. You know, and just sniffing out, supposed to, and keeping this community safe. So I just, that always just, it's great to be safe. And it's, that's fire department, that's police, that's, but really appreciate all you, all you do. And educated, thank you, Jamie. Educated and book, yeah, we want to keep reading too. So, thank you. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Speaking of Jamie, just want to thank her for another program today. You brought, my kids brought bags of candy and treats home for the May Basket program. Another great program that you guys are offering.
Okay, I think that's everybody. I would just add that I was down at the race on Saturday and enjoyed being down there and rooting everybody on from my kids to my grandkids. So that was great fun. And everybody who worked so hard to put it on. In, in the whole scheme of things, having about a hundred and fifty people at your first event is, is exemplary. That's, that's great to have that many people. So kudos to you. All right. If nothing else, then I guess I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?